Put your microphone on mute. It might sound quiet where you are, but there's a lot of background noise you get to pick. So that would be very helpful. Hello, Paul. Is that him?
Paul Mogul?
I'm on mute. Yes, I am here.
Okay. Justin DeCrow?
Present.
Lynn Marie Thompson? No, she's here.
She was. She seems to have gone away.
Um, she is that one.
Yeah. Continue, girl. I will come back.
Uh, Beth Rebe? Absent. Glenn Brevner? I know he's absent. Tony Capon?
Here.
Uh, zoning official Kyle Felice?
Here.
And planner Liz Verdict?
Here.
All right. And Lynn Marie, are you back on? Can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, good.
All right, so moving on to public comments. You have anybody from the public with us here tonight? Anybody on the continent who would like to step down and make a public comment? All right, if it's not, that's a big enough. Move on to our old business here because we continue discussion on our Waterfords' proposed fee. So, uh, if you want to email, they won't have a text for you to look at the documents that was...
Um, hold on a minute.
I'm having difficulty hearing you, Justin. Is it my computer or is anybody else having difficulty?
Yeah, I'm struggling here, people.
I'm having difficulty. Justin is cutting out.
I'm having the same issue.
All right, so, uh, we're on old business. We're looking for a discussion on the proposed of our wetlands fees. I was asking everybody, everybody has received the document that was drafted out earlier in the week for us to review. And agents to discuss.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, Deb has actually placed a new document. I've been on vacation for the last two weeks. So finish it up today amongst other things I have going on. And I was hoping that it would be possible for me to sort of just go through each section. See, can see where we are and compare it to other towns. Would that be acceptable?
Uh, it is unacceptable. Please do.
Okay, so Deb has in front of your screen right now what your existing fees are. 150 per lot for build single-family house, 250 per lot subdivision, 150 per lot commercial or mixed use, 35 for gazebos and ponds, all others, 300 for public hearing. Complex application fee is, um, uh, determined, you know, with regards to the project, $75 renewal and $75 modification. Deb, can you go up a bit, please?
I can.
Okay, so the next is recommended and I've, uh, could you go up a little more up to recommended, Deb? Move that up to the top of the screen.
It is.
So what I did was I tried to break the activities down by duly authorized agent approvals, which Kyle does, and by applications before the commission. Um, this commission allows its agent to approve them. Um, for those fees, I recommended upland review area permit application by duly authorized agent. And I made a note that those fees are smaller than what I've proposed to be in front of the commission because the applicant does their own advertisement, okay? Um, I proposed $50 for residential accessory structures, um, up to 1,000 square feet, and 100 for greater than, uh, 1,000 square feet. Um, I looked at other towns that listed these types of reviews. Not all towns, um, allow agent approvals. Montville's fee is $150. Stonington's is 100, Norwich is 30. So now what these are, these are applications that are reviewed by Kyle. Now residential accessory structures, I picked the number of $50. That's not set in stone. We could certainly go down to maybe 35. Um, uh, but it's residential, it's structures up to 1,000 square feet. Addition sheds, decks, whatnot for agent approvals. So, um, for residential structures over 1,000 fair feet, which would include new single-family and two-family residences, um, I put $100 and I think that's a reasonable fee because there's a lot of review that goes into that. A lot more. But if you wanted to drop that down to 50, I'm fine with that, too. You have your wetlands official on, uh, on, in the meeting with us. So, you know, he can answer any questions as the amount of time it takes. Um, there is a lot of work by staff when you do, um, duly authorized agent approvals as well. So I basically just tried to account for, you know, staff review time.
What does advertising cost?
So we do not advertise, um, applications approved by the zone, wetlands official. It is up to the applicant to do the advertisement. So those fees would only be for, um, uh, the wetlands official review time. It would be for our staffs, you know, having to put together the permit and do the mailings and whatnot. I don't have a problem with those dropping down. Um, you could certainly speak to Kyle with regards to time it takes to review those.
So Liz, my question is, where do the funds that are collected actually go?
Deb, can you answer that? They go into the general fund, I believe.
He, uh, yes, I believe they do. I'm not 100% sure, but I would assume they do.
And, and I, I, I'm gonna have to agree with Deb. I'm not positive, but I believe they go into the general fund.
Is there a guidance on the advertising, um, format that is provided by yourself or your staff?
Absolutely. We have examples. We send everything off by certified mail. Tell them exactly what to do, uh, yes. And all they have to do is contact the day with the, um, link that we give them and they put the ad in and, you know, we go from there after 15 days. If there's no, um, you know, appeals, they can go ahead. We can go ahead and issue zoning permits.
Approximately, what would that cost, Elizabeth? Approximately?
I don't know.
I don't either. That's why I'm asking.
I can tell you that the approximate cost to advertise for the town is $150 per.
Yeah.
Could be longer if it's a bigger project, more property owners, but we averaged it out, Deb and I, to $150 an ad. So, uh, you know, if you wanted to drop these review fees down because the applicant is responsible for their own, um, advertising, that's up to the commission. I'm, I'm showing you, Norwich charges 30. Um, they go from there. So maybe 25 for the sheds up to 1,000 and 75 for over 1,000. That would be for a new house or a two-family. So, you know, there is a cost, um, associated with that.
So this is Lynn Marie. So what if we just did a standard $50 fee, whether it was a residential accessory or the, the additional expansions to existing structures?
Well, because the first one is for accessory structures or additions. The second fee is for a new single-family house. I mean, it's entirely up to you if you want to do $50, but I would hate to have someone pay $50 for a shed and the next guy pay $50 for a brand-new house or a two-family house. So if you wanted to drop it down to maybe 25 and 50, if 50 is what you want to go across the board, it's the level of review which is the difference to me. It's entirely up to you. If you guys want $50 across the board, you know, you're just, you'll, you'll, in that case, you would be having someone pay the same permit fee for a single-family, new single-family residence as for a shed.
Yeah, that would be, that would be...
So maybe, maybe 25 and 50? 25 and 75?
So, so since we have a 35, why not do 35 and 75?
It's fine with me. Anybody else have that?
35, 35 also.
So 35 and 75? I'm sorry, Justin, can you repeat that?
I, I also liked the 35 and 75. Anybody else need to put here in this section?
So if, if everyone's good with that, I've made the changes in, in my office here and Deb will have to move the screen up again.
Okay, all right.
So, and so when she goes to the next page, the first, the last one on that first sheet is pre-application review. Obviously, we have no fee. And then if you go up to the next page, Deb, uh, permitted uses as of right, non-regulated uses as determined by the commission, no fee. Um, residential uses including but not limited, no, yeah, you can stay there, Deb.
Okay.
Residential uses included but not limited to new single and two-family dwellings, accessory structures and/or additions or expansions to existing structures. Now, keep in mind, now we're off agent approvals. Now we're into an application that has to come before the commission, okay? And maybe it's a residential use, a new fam, new single or two-family house, um, that the, the wetlands official doesn't feel comfortable with, so he sends it off to you for site plan review. Okay, um, I had a fee of $200 on that. And Montville charges 150, Stonington charges 100, Watford charges 110. The region I charged 200 was $150 for advertising. We have to advertise that decision when they come to you. We know it's 150 bucks average. I threw two in there for inflation because who knows when we're gonna do this again. But I would suggest then a minimum, because of the advertising cost, we wouldn't be making a dime if you dropped it to 150.
So this is covered then, we covered the advertising and this component, is that correct?
Yes, so when it's before the commission, the town pays for it. So I would recommend at least 150 to cover the town's costs.
So Liz, this is for non-regu, areas in non-regulated areas, right?
No, so we're past that. There's no fees for any non-regulated permitted uses as of right. Now we're into, let's say someone has a two-family dwelling and it comes before you guys. It's an actual application which has to have the decision noticed in the paper.
Okay, that's because there's a regulated activity on the property.
We wouldn't send them to you if it didn't.
Okay.
It wouldn't be before you if it wasn't a regulated activity.
Okay.
So the cost, the cost to the town is gonna be about $150. If you want to drop it to that, I'm fine with that.
Think that's a good idea.
So drop it to 150?
Rather than just...
Okay, so that, we'll drop that down to 150. Now, I did multifamily, commercial, industrial, mixed uses to 250. Montville does 200, Norwich does 270, Stonington does 200, Watford does 160. So it looks like everybody's bumped up $50 on this one. So that could go down from 250 to 200.
So Liz, this is Lynn Marie. The question I had is, is it legal to charge different fees to different people who present? Is, is it considered not, I want to make sure we're not discriminating, but that we actually can charge a developer more versus a landowner versus another?
Well, no, and, and, no, we're not charging different people fees. We're charging different projects fees. So a multifamily development, a commercial development, an industrial development, a mixed-use development is gonna, um, take a lot more, um...
Review.
Review than a single-family house. And it looks like every single person, so you're not charging a person, a developer. You know, I may come in and say, you know, I want to build an industrial building and I'm applying as a business owner, not a developer. So, you know, um, you're not charging the person, you're charging per project, the type of project.
Okay, so why am I seeing a residential subdivision review without a regulated...
We're not, we're not there yet. We're not there yet. We're on the one above it.
Okay.
So since everyone seems to have bumped up between 50 and $100, you want to drop it from 250 to 200?
Well, I'd really want to support industrial uses and mixed uses, but, uh, that would help that. Multifamily, I thought, would fit within the residential subdivision, but I see where you've got it now.
I mean, we can do 200 across the board if you want. I don't have a problem with that. It'll still cover our fees to advertise.
That's fair.
So if you want to drop that down to two, yeah, 200. Montville charges 200, Stonington 200, Norwich 270, Watford 160. So they're all around 200. 200, okay. Okay, so now I'm gonna go down to the next one. So, uh, Deb, could you scroll that up, please?
Sure.
So these are for subdivision applications without regulated activities. So as you know, if a piece of property has any wetlands on it and there's a subdivision of that land, whether or not there's, even if there are no regulated activities, it shall go, an application shall be submitted to the wetlands commission no later than the same day as planning and zoning. And all that the commission is doing, if there's no regulated activities, is they're reviewing the application and they are forwarding a report to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, the reason I charged 250, 200 for that is we have to advertise that decision. So if you want to drop that down to 150, I'm okay.
If that's a lot of cost, I'd like to do 150.
150?
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay, so we'll drop that. So basically, all that does is cover our cost to advertise the decision. That's it. Now, then we get into the next one. Deb, could you go up again? So now we have, now we have residential subdivision with regulated activities fees, base fee. And I kind of laughed because you guys were like, wow, 250 a lot, that's a lot. Well, that's what you charge now. I didn't change that. That's what you, that's what you currently charge. Montville has no base fee, but they charge 50 a lot. Stonington has a $250 base fee plus 50 a lot. Groton Town, I couldn't really figure it out. It was tough. 370 base fee. Norwich has 270 base fee plus $50 a lot in excess of three lots. So if it gets past three lots, there's more review involved, they charge an extra 50. So in other words, you get your base fee, you get three lots. If you're doing a four, five, six, seven, eight lot subdivision, then you pay 50 per lot over the three. And I kind of like that. I think that's reasonable. Charging like a 250 per, a 250 base fee, okay? Which covers a good, I mean, you gotta do a good review on this one. Um, 250 base fee, and if it's over three lots, charge the extra, um, 50 a lot. That's what Stonington does. So now we're not charging 250 a lot for a three-lot subdivision. You're paying 750 for a wetlands fee. That's a lot of money.
Right.
But that's what you charge now. So, you know, our general fund was smiling when we get these applications.
I know, but, um, Mont, they're, we're more similar to Montville and Watford than we are to Stonington in terms of development potential.
Right, right. So Montville, right, Montville charges 50 a lot and, uh...
Three lots, but then 160, so above.
Right. So, you know, what do you guys, what do you guys think? We, we're all saying, you know, like, we had that Eagles Landing subdivision. That was, what, 28 lots at 250 a lot? That was a nice, that was a huge fee that the developer had to pay and he paid it. Um, so I, I like the base fee which covers our administrative and advertised costs plus fees per lot. If you want to give them three lots for nothing, have at it. You want to charge a base fee of 200 plus $50 a lot? You know, this is all up to you guys.
I think I favor the 250 up to three lots and that 50 a lot after that.
Sorry, Justin, could you repeat?
I'm saying from the 250 that covers up to three lots, $50 additional lot after that.
All right, so 250 up to three lots plus 50 in lot in excess of three lots.
Yeah.
Okay, I like that.
Could we bring that down to 200?
Well, you're giving them three lots for nothing on that, Paul, so...
I hear you, I hear you.
I think, I think, you know, 250 is a good base fee for a three-lot subdivision.
Pretty close, though, what you have here for the standing, I'll go for it.
So, so are we all in agreement on that? 250 base fee up to three lots, 50 in excess of three, correct? It's hard to hear everyone, so you're gonna have to nod for me.
I, I would agree, and that's for lots that are regulated, right?
Correct. Those are lots with regulated activities where you're looking at engineering reports, wetlands reports. You know, there's a whole lot more to it than a subdivision that has wetlands but no regulated activities.
So if I have a subdivision that has 50 lots and only three of them have regulated activities on them, then my fee would be...
Well, so that, I didn't think about that. So now you've brought up another point. So, you know, 250 base fee plus...
Wow.
And now, you see, the thing with a subdivision is you have to look at it as a whole with wetlands because you typically will have a road, you have driveways, you have drainage. Everything goes to the wetlands, so I would leave it at 250 plus 50 a lot. The general fund's not gonna be smiling as loud, uh, big, but it's, it's, I think it's reasonable when you're looking at a subdivision. You, it would be too difficult for us to figure out every single time, well, which lot has regulated activities and maybe there's no activities on this lot, but there's something on the other lot that might affect it. So I think if you just say 250 base fee over three lots, 50 a lot. I think that makes it cleaner.
I, I agree.
Okay. So, so then the commercial subdivision with regulated activities, um, would you want to do the same thing and up at $50 or not? Or just leave it at 200 as well?
No, 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 do the same thing. I think it'd make it more functional. And the commercial subdivision actually brings in more taxes in the land than does the residential.
So basically, you want the commercial and the residential to be 250 plus 50 in excess of three lots. Everyone's good with that?
Yeah, there's a difference between the town and that, right, between commercial and residential?
Well, again, we're looking at commercials. Sometimes they're more complicated applications, you know?
No, I would agree.
Three lots then included into 250, is that correct?
I'm sorry, three lots would be included in the 250.
And then in addition, they say that four lots, there's another, another 50 bucks.
Correct.
I got you.
So we're all good with that for that category?
I am.
Okay, Deb, can you? Okay, Deb, can you move it up a little, please, to, so we can see the significant impact? So here's the thing, a lot of towns have a, oddly, they have a significant impact activity fee plus a public hearing fee because, of course, if you have significant impact, you have a public hearing, okay? Montville has a $200 significant impact fee plus 450 for the hearing. Norwich has just 290. Stonington 200, Watford 360 plus $400 public hearing fee. We don't do that here. I mean, we make a determination if it's significant impact, your A or B, you know, activities. If it's a significant impact activity, you hold a public hearing. Now, currently, you charge 300. I'm gonna recommend, I propose 500, but I'm gonna recommend 450 with no additional, so no significant impact activity base fee, just the public hearing fee. Because that covers two notices of public hearing and one notice of decision at 150.
Well, then you're at 300 plus your work, right?
I'm sorry, what?
You're at $300 plus the work, plus the time of Kyle and yourself.
Well, no, it'll cost us 450, it'll cost us 450 just to advertise it. So I would say at least cover our costs at 450.
I thought the advertising was like 100 and a half each time, is that not correct?
Right, and we have three, for that type of application, three notices. I mean, we're not trying to make money off of people, but I think the town needs to have their fees covered. They've probably been, they've probably been losing money except for the, you know, like, the Eagles Landing fees, you know? Developers been making up the difference. So would you want 450 or 500 on that one? 450 will cover our costs. 450? Okay, so, uh, Deb, could you move that up again, please?
Yep.
So our complex application fee, as you know, uh, that the way, the agency may charge an additional fee sufficient to cover the cost of reviewing and acting on the application. There's a whole thing that goes along with it. Um, so there's nothing to do on that. That's exactly what yours says now for the most part and we would figure out the fee. So if we have like, uh, you know, a huge span bridge coming in, well, we know that's gonna be complex. We're gonna have to hire outside consultants because it's out of, uh, it's, it's above my pay grade. So to review that type of, um, uh, application. So I didn't propose any changes there. Um, currently, you charge, uh, renewal of previously approved permit. The only reason I charged 250 was 200 for those and the modification was because we have to notice it. So currently, we charge 75. Um, and 150 would cover our costs. Stonington charges regular fees, Watford 110, Norwich 120. Do we have to notice a renewal? I don't know. I think, I think you have to notice a renewal and I think you have to notice an approval of a modification. So the only thing I would recommend there is $150 to cover town costs.
I agree, 150 to cover the cost.
Okay, all right, so then there was one that we don't actually have right now. So that, as I was looking at other towns, I'm like, hmm, didn't think about that. So the last one is an IWC regulation or map amendment. Now typically, it's the agency that brings them forward, but anybody could. So we have to anticipate that. I had listed $500. Currently, we don't charge a fee for that, so I don't know. I guess we make it up at the time. Montville, Montville charges 200, Preston 300, Stonington 200, Norwich Stonington 350, Norwich 270. But also remember that many of those towns charge a public hearing fee of 450. So 450 there would cover our costs if someone else submitted that application for two public hearing notices and a decision.
The National Resource Conservation Service also has an inland wetlands map that they maintain. Now, I don't know how this, um, coalesces with that. I don't know how this coalesces with that, and whether or not we actually maintain our own maps of inland wetlands. And how does it coalesce with what the feds are doing with their satellites?
Well, I mean, here's the thing, I mean, it's just sort of a placeholder in there because a, a person that is, a, a person that is, you know, involved, they, they could file a regulation or map amendment, any member of the public can do it. That has standing, okay, you can't just file it, you have to have some standing, but, so it's really just there, I don't think we'll ever get any, but it's there in case so that our costs are covered at a fee of 450.
Is it necessary to pass separately if it's going to cause, if it's going to cause a public hearing, we're going to have a public hearing?
All that, all regulation and map amendments have public hearings required.
Right, and we've already listed a public hearing.
I'd bring it down to Montville's cost, and that way we're at par with what other folks are doing.
It's going to cost the town, right, but it's going to cost the town $450 to advertise that.
We have to have three different advertisers?
Yes, absolutely. Two public hearing notices, one decision notice, never mind the certified mail, you know, blah, blah, blah. So it'll cost us 450 to advertise, so I would recommend keeping it on there. I don't think we'll ever see an application from anyone other than this agency. If this agency changes their regs, there's no fee, so... I would leave it at 450, which covers our costs.
I agree.
I agree.
You know, we're not trying to make money off the, off of town residents, that's not what we're here for, but, you know, the, you know, I can only see these fees going up, so, you know, we might already be shortchanging ourselves, because as soon as the state of emergency's over, there's no breaks anymore, we're right back to what the statutes require. You know, and hopefully, and we could change it, you know, there's been a lot of people lobbying to allow towns to advertise these things on their websites instead of in the legal notices of a paper, or at least once there instead of twice, and, you know, perhaps all the, the COVID remote meetings and advertising on websites will strike a chord, and maybe the statutes will change with regards to noticing, who knows? But right now, that's what we have. So that's it, that's all I have, folks.
Anybody have more comments or concerns?
So there's one more thing I want to add, and one, one thing that I forgot to look at is, the, there's an addendum to the wetlands ordinance from town council, and that's what this would be for. But I also need to find out if the fee schedule that's in the regulations is part of the regulations, we might have to do amendment to change that. If it's just an addendum from the, from the ordinances, we wouldn't have to do that, and that's something I'd have to look into a little further.
Yes, Liz, this is Lynn Marie, I agree. We need to take the fees out of the regulations and put them some other place so that the fees can change and we don't have to revise our regs.
Right.
Absolutely. So what we may have to do is do a, you know, if I find that it's part of the regs, we'll have to do a quick amendment to remove them, and they would be approvable by ordinance by the town council, they could go up, they could go down, you know, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I think they are part of our regulations, because they're supposed to throw out, but go back to in the case of our fee schedule.
Right, so we would have...
Part of our regulations, which requires amendment to change them, change them, as you said, to first, the town council fee schedule.
Right, I think we could probably do that for the next meeting because of the new state of emergency requirements.
Liz, this is Lynn Marie, I'm hoping that we will see for our next meeting what we've agreed upon, so we can look at those one more time before we make a decision.
That sounds good to me, I'll go through everything.
Changing our regulations, does that require a public hearing?
No.
Uh, yes.
Really?
But there's no cost to the town because it's ours, and there's no time limits, because towns are exempt from time limits. For their own applications.
All right, so, we have a summary of how we wrote this down, to make sure we're hearing it all. I have $35 for anything, $75 for greater than 1,000 square feet. Land use is $150. Multifamily structures, multifamily residential, commercial, is that $200. Residential subdivision without regulated activities, about 250. And if regulated activities, that's 250, that covers three lots and additional lots. Commercial subdivision with regulated activities, that 250 to cover up to three lots, $50 for the total. Significant activities, $400. Renewal or modification of application of 150. Now, regulation or map amendment of 450.
Except, you forgot too, Justin, one, the renewal and the modification of an existing approved permit was 150.
Thank you, I got that.
Okay. So I'm, the Land Use Planning and Public Works Committee is meeting next Monday, and they asked me to, to, you know, to sort of give them what the, what the wetlands, they want to give the wetlands recommendation, and I know Lynn Marie, you said you wanted to see it all again, but I think Justin just went over every single thing that you said. So, if you, you can either table this till your next meeting and make a motion, and then I would have to put it off from Land Use for a month, or you could make a motion to accept these fees and make a recommendation to Land Use. For next week.
Given how, given how confusing it is to meet online, I would like to see what we think we've decided on before we move this forward. We could share with the Land Use what we're anticipating, but I need to kind of see what we've, where we've landed.
You got it. So you would have to table this matter till your next meeting.
All right, when we come to the end of this, our recommendations as we receive and move forward to a public hearing before we can vote for the step.
Well...
Make our recommendations up, and then the fees out of our regulations and the steps.
Right, well, there's already an ordinance with your fees and wetlands, so I don't know, I'm a little confused as to why there's both, but right now, there's both. Maybe, does, and I don't have the wetlands regs in front of me, does the wetlands regulations reference the ordinance number?
No, it's a penalty of our regulations.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, that's something I have to look into, but I do want to at least, you know, sort of try to get going. One more month, you can see everything on paper, I'll send that off to Deb tomorrow, she can send that off to everybody, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Good.
And while I have everyone here, does anyone have any other questions for me about anything wetlands related or planning related? Because I'm still in the office in my chair, and I'd like to leave the meeting after this if it's okay with all of you. I'll let Kyle and Deb finish it up.
So Liz, as I'm thinking back, one of the, the areas of confusion was certain fees applied to lands that had wetlands on them or were affected by wetlands versus not. So as you do your rewrite, can you be really clear about what's affected by lands that have wetlands or lands that have upland review? The way you've got it framed with upland review works well, but items that, with regulated with regulated property, I do, we just need to be really clear.
Okay, and then you guys can look at it next week and see what, next month, see what you think. Wetlands, wetlands regulations fees have always confused me too, so, in every town. I remember when they used to do fees by linear feet of wetlands, good lord, try to figure that out.
That would have been crazy. It covered, doesn't, doesn't, I don't think it's over complicated too much.
Yeah, it's pretty good, I think we have it down, and I think we've made it reasonable, and we've made it easier for a property owner that's putting up a shed, it's going to be less expensive.
All right, do we have any further discussion here for our old business of the wetlands fees? All right, here none. Thank you, Ms. Burdick.
Okay, good night, everybody, I'll see you soon.
Good night, Liz, thank you.
All right, so we have new business, our acknowledgement of new applications, did we have a new application acknowledged tonight? Mr. Police?
Um, no, we have not received any applications.
All right. Moving on to our wetlands official report, you have an official report for us?
I do, I apologize, we took one prior, I did one last week and I just finalized it today, that's, I don't have a report yet, but it was an upland review area permit, 36 Sandy Hollow Road. It's for the installation of a new 20 by 12 foot shed within the upland area, so I approved it last week, advertisement was posted today, so it went up, breaking the owner.
So Kyle, just a reminder, that those reports need to come out to commission members on the Monday before the Tuesday meeting.
Correct, I did apologize, this report, I mean, I'm sorry, the application was just finalized today, so prior to that, there was no report, that's why it was done later today, and you didn't receive it prior to the meeting?
Okay. Nothing else for the past month?
Um, correct, there's been no new complaints or violations, and that's the only permit I've done, correct?
All right, moving on to correspondence, do we have any correspondence for this evening? Miss up, police?
I have received none, I just want to have Deb confirm that she hasn't received anything.
No, no correspondence.
No correspondence, moving on to announcements, do we have any announcements from any of our members? They're watching, any questions? No. Minutes approved? Opportunity review minutes from our last meeting? And I just wonder if you guys aren't speaking, can you please put your phones on mute?
Hi, Justin, this is Lynn Marie, I looked at the minutes and they seem fine.
I'll second that.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve our minutes from August 4th?
By Lynn Marie.
All right, motion by Lynn Marie?
Second by Paul Mogul.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, that's motion passes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that, it said, motion passes, all were in favor. Approve our regular meeting minutes of August 4th.
Great.
All right, so our next meeting review. Say this format works well for us, if, continue reminding, you know, mute the microphones, there's a lot of background noise, if you don't notice, they get picked up on a microphone. And if I am not speaking loud enough, means that you are very willing to tell me, so thank you, I'll be louder. We did get the correspondence in advance, we did have a change to our old business sheet that, it was on the screen here for us to review as we went over tonight, so that was helpful. Then, you know, this police, as I said, no, nothing new until this morning, which implicated not having it prepared in writing for the report, I think that's all right, it was just this morning. Yeah, anybody have any more input for our meeting review?
Oh, good.
All right, so, if that would be adjourned, looking for a motion to adjourn?
We only have one comment before we do it, and that's next time we do a fee structure, we ought to bring in an auctioneer. Do I hear 75, 75, 100, 100, 125? Sorry, folks, I couldn't help it.
We might get some more town participation in that, that regard, make it exciting.
All right.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mogul. All right, do we have any motions to adjourn?
Some of.
All right, motion by Mr. Mogul, seconds? Do we have a second? I need a second to adjourn.
Seconded by Lynn Marie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned at 7:47. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.